101, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Aye, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry about that. Approval of the open session minutes from April 9, 2018?
Motion to approve the minutes from April 9, 2018.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Maria is not with us tonight?
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Okay, we'll move on to community comments. Seeing none, we'll turn it over to you, Dr. Merschek.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Pre-orders in business tonight. First, a piece of really good news that I'm pleased to announce. It was announced, actually, the week of April vacation, that our district has been named as a Green Ribbon Award District by the Massachusetts Department of Education. And essentially, it's a federal program through the U.S. Department of Education. So our application has been forwarded to the U.S. Department of Education, and we're here next month, whether we will be federally recognized Green Ribbon District. But as I say in the background notes, it's an award program that's been in place for about seven years now, and it really honors and recognizes physical schools and districts that have done work around reducing environmental impact and costs, reducing your carbon footprint, improving the health and well-being of students, and delivering effective environmental and sustainability education. So we got some initial feedback around the work that we've done, particularly around energy conservation with the solar project and the LED lighting and so on. So hence the rest recognition. So I will keep you apprised, but we're got our fingers crossed for the federal recognition next May.
It's fantastic. It's great.
It is good news. It really is. Second piece is an update on our strategic planning process. We have met as a full core planning team twice, and then a third time was last Monday with our facilitator, Dr. Cummins. And myself and the leadership team, along with Dr. Cummins, did a SWOT analysis for the district, and started to take a look at some of the initial work that the core team has done with regard to developing a portrait of a graduate, and looking at what are the end outcomes, the end competencies that we want for all students. So I believe our next meeting isn't until towards the end of May, but in the process is really a lot of data gathering. Kathy has started the process of doing different focus groups with students, with parents, and with staff members. She had a pretty busy week last week, where she had, I think, at least three or four different focus group meetings, and she also attended the NIPMUC lead learner meeting last Thursday afternoon. And we have another focus group session coming up for parents only, coming up on May 7, which is the next time we also meet as a full core strategic planning team. Okay. And then last, but certainly not least, I provided some notes as far as where we are with regard to the FY19 state budget process. If you followed the news, within the last couple of weeks, there was a debate, an amendment process to the state budget in the House. And we made some small progress. Unfortunately, I would characterize it as incremental progress from the governor's budget. If you recall, the governor's budget, Chapter 78, was an whopping additional $20 per student. The House budget was finalized at $30 per student additional. So in that, we picked up an additional $21,810. And then the regional transportation reimbursement really wasn't finalized at any specific percentage, rather, just $2 million was added to the overall allocation in that line item in the total state budget. So proportionally, we picked up an additional $34,739 in regional transportation. And keep in mind, it's estimated that that probably would only get us to probably around the 73%, 74% reimbursement rate, which is kind of unfortunate, seeing that there were two separate amendments, one to get us to the 85% reimbursement rate, and one to 100% that did not come to fruition. So like I say in the background notes, it's a step in the right direction, but it still doesn't address the approximately $250,000 shortfall to level services that, you know, we already certified the budget at. So the next round will commence within the next week or two, the Senate budget, you know, looking at things strictly from a political perspective. Because there are fewer senators than representatives, approximately two-thirds of state senators have a community within their district that's part of a regional school district. So I think our best chance of picking up some additional state funding is in that regional transportation reimbursement. Okay? Any questions on any of that?
So this is the final step, the Senate is the final step before they pass it, or?
Well, technically, then in June, it goes to something called conference committee, where they look at the differences between the House budget and then the Senate budget. They hammer them out, and then it goes to the government. Usually, unfortunately, the conference committee process oftentimes is very protracted. In theory, it's supposed to be finalized for the start of the new fiscal year, July 1. A lot of times, it doesn't get to the governor's desk in the past couple of years until something like July 15.
Okay. Just wondering if there's any other opportunities to interject in that process?
I would say everything that we can do to contact Senator Fatman and Senator Moore. I do have to, I will publicly give them credit. They've signed on everything that we've asked them to, as far as putting forward amendments, things like Circuit Breaker, things like the Foundation Budget Review Commission. They've been very supportive. I found Senator Fatman tweeted at me, I think it was over the weekend or on Friday, about, you know, his support for the reinstatement of Circuit Breaker to 75%. So I think they get it. I think they're supportive, but they're two voices. So I would say anything that can be done within the community to contact them in this Friday's town crier will be a letter to the editor from you, the same one that you signed off on, I think, two meetings ago, asking people to reach out to them.
Moving on to administrators' comments.
Okay. Jen Manion is here tonight. Jen had a busy week last night, last week, rather. And her, along with members of the School Advisory Council, shared some information regarding, some initial thoughts regarding scheduling and specifically tracking. So I asked, and I know some of you here on the committee were part of those meetings that we had, so I asked to just kind of provide a concise update of where we are in that process.
Thank you for having me. Well, we've seen a lot of each other share, and it's all good. So we're excited to be able to share on our progress so far. We were able to present to parents on, I don't know what night last week.
Wednesday.
And it was, it felt like our advisory members did a great job presenting, and some teachers who helped to support that presentation. And we had great questions following the presentation from parents. It's a good, healthy dialogue, I think. So where we are now in terms of next steps is looking at parent feedback on our presentation, and lingering questions that people still have, and trying to address those questions and needs, so that we can move forward with our efforts. So some of the feedback has been concern about our teachers, and how will they meet the demands of heterogeneous grouping, to challenge high-riding mislearners, in the way that parents feel that their students have been challenged in these honors courses, and how will the teachers be supported if this is something that they feel they need to build capacity around. Some questions about why honors is being eliminated, if it was truly for the reasons that we spoke of, or if it was really about fairness. And wondering about moving forward without an honors track at MSCO, what that would mean for students at NIPMUC, in terms of their advantages and disadvantages, and wondering how along the pathways for learning at NIPMUC. So it felt good to be able to speak to these things, because our faculty has already done so much work. We have such strong thinkers, I think, in our staff. So we had done the Back to the Future Protocol that we had done the Strategic Planning Committee. So we asked teachers during a faculty meeting to envision MSCO in 2023, as we use present tense verbs, and we're actually in 2023, and then look back to 2018. So our teachers identified, this is just one group's chart for 2023, things like our students will care about learning, will achieve independence, create goals, reflect on progress and meeting their goals, collaborate to solve authentic problems, practice a real result, demonstrate basic age-appropriate life skills, advocate, have a growth mindset, take pride in the work of themselves, and know that what they do matters. And reflecting back, they talked about students focused on scores, not as prepared for class, didn't do work unless it counted to our grade, feeling unfocused, feeling that classes were not heterogenously mixed, and feeling pressured to meet the standards of the common core. And again, this was just one group's output. You know, we had some things like in 2023, we're in our shiny new school, with 25 more support staff, but we really just talked about focusing on what's within our sphere of influence, that we really believe in or have, that we can bring to student learning. So then teachers created a roadmap from 2018 to 2023, what would be the steps that it would take to get us there. So you can see that the teachers identified on their own all the things that we presented to parents in terms of making this shift from tracking students to truly educating the whole child, and understanding where kids are developmentally and academically, and planning instructional moves based on what we know about learners in real time, rather than tracking students to a certain pathway at a chosen stage. So they came up with the work that needs to be done. There's lots of this already happening at MSCO. So we're going to look at how we build on this and grow it in our practice and support each other. We really believe we all own all the learners, adults and children, all of us. So it'll be about supporting learning, play each other accountable, and helping each other grow. So we talked about next steps, how are we going to get there? It's a great vision, but how do we dig in and actually do the work? So we are focusing on prioritizing equity in terms of what is offered to students scheduling-wise. We have a three-year plan that we've developed with the scheduling committee, so we're working on year one, which is mostly technical changes right now. Doesn't really show a whole lot of difference in terms of the adaptive things we're thinking about in terms of what's best for learning, but we are creating some equities with the technical changes we're making this year. We're talking about measuring what matters in terms of learning versus work completion, engaging deeply students by using a debt, engaging teachers and students by using a data-driven approach, so that we know where kids are, where they need to go next, and building capacity, using impactful practices, developing skills with teacher leadership, and engaging student voice. So I think that's kind of where we are in terms of that work. I think we'll plan another session, just a follow-up question and answer session, because I think that people would like some more time to clarify their understanding and make sure that they have a clear vision of what it will look like for their child in a classroom that's heterogeneity grouped in this law. So that will be coming up in probably two weeks or so. And then the other thing we did update on is our efforts, specifically on schedule.
So with relation to scheduling, again, we did the presentation on that Saturday, kind of going over some of the things we've been looking at. Obviously, wellness and PE is something that not only is a law requirement, we feel very strongly that it's so important to have that available for our middle school students, because, you know, social-emotional learning is such an important impactful thing for our students to be able to be taking part in. Taking a look at the rotation of our schedule, you know, a lot of the data, a lot of the, I'm sorry, I'm losing my mind here.
Rotation.
The rotation, right. So when we take a look at it, it kind of rotates in a very odd kind of fashion. So some students work really well in the morning, whereas they don't work as well in the afternoon. So it's going to be rotate, hopefully, going to be able to rotate it right straight through the whole day. We're taking a look at timeline learning, taking a look at are there any opportunities for us to be able to have more time for our students during the course of the day, and also taking a look at extending lunch. We currently have lunch for 15 minutes, and a little bit of a rush to kind of get everything done, and do that as quickly as possible. So we're looking to try to extend that time to give kids more of a break during the middle of the day. As Jen talked about, a lot of the things that we're taking a look at this year are more technical rather than adaptive. And when we talk about technical, it's, you know, rotating a schedule, that's more of a technical thing. Where the adaptive is, is how do we take advantage of the time, and how do we make sure that we do have opportunities for all of our classes to collaborate? I think one of the biggest pieces of work that we're looking at is, is how do I take all of the different areas? So whether, you know, right now, we teach art in a discreet kind of fashion, where it's on its own, and how do we take that and embed it in what goes on in the classes, so it's not just a standalone class, but it also impacts everything, not just art, as you're using it as an example, but all of the offerings at MSCO, trying to incorporate all of that, so they can all work together. So that's more of a longer-term vision. The other thing is, too, is that I've gone through the technical pieces of the training, so I can run different iterations of this. That's what we're currently doing, working with the special ed department to try to kind of nail down exactly what our students need, and then build the schedule out from there. So we'll be taking a look over the next couple of weeks, different versions of how it will look for teachers. I think teachers are basically saying, yeah, it sounds good, but what's it going to look like in the real time? So I'm hoping to be able to provide them with, here's a mock schedule, and here's how it would look for you, and here's all the different things we need currently.
So just, just for clarification, to make sure everybody understands, because I know this is the biggest questions I'm getting right now from people are, what are the timeframes over which all of this takes place? And I don't know if you want to just cover that one more time, just to make sure everybody understands each touch point that it is.
Sure. Yep. So we are shifting to heterogeneously grouped classes in seventh grade for next year. Eighth grade will remain the way it is right now, so we'll have honors in ELA, science, social studies, and math. Math honors is algebra, so I think there might have been a little confusion around that in our presentation, during the nighttime presentation last week. I think we got better during the daytime, the second days we went. So that was a clarification point, is that algebra and honors are the same thing. So we will maintain leveled math in eighth grade moving forward beyond 2018, 19. And our hope is that we can increase the number of students who are able to access algebra, because right now, because of the honors cutoff, we have students who are capable of doing algebra, but not making it into the courses.
Cool.
Thanks for asking.
Tremendous amount of work has gone since we last met, so it's exciting to hear the update and see some of the work that you guys have done so far.
Yeah, it's really exciting to see the teachers, because this is moving into the future for all of our students in the middle schools. That's really cool.
Couldn't do without the faculty that we have.
I imagine there's going to be a big push for PD to be kind of in this area with heterogeneous grouping, and kind of being able to, I know, Sean, to your point that we talked about giving immediate feedback to teachers, so that they can individualize learning for our students. So I imagine we'll see a lot of PD in that area.
And one of the things I think that's important to remember, Diane, is a lot of what we are focusing on is not new to teachers' practice. We see people doing a lot of the things that are most impactful oftentimes. It's more that laser focus on what are the most impactful practices, and stepping away from the things that have a lesser impact, that are no longer considered best practice. So the honors tracking, while we're not denying there's some impact there, it's just it's not as impactful as the other things that we can be focusing on in terms of teaching and learning. So our job is really to support teachers and collaboration on those practices, and giving each other feedback, and hold each other accountable for those things.
So I just have a quick question, just some concerns that I've heard from the parent community, in terms of teachers having more opportunities to collaborate on students, because they're all going to be in multiple classrooms, working with multiple teachers. With this new schedule you're talking about, Paul, will that give teachers greater opportunities to collaborate together, to really be able to discuss kids, where they're at, where they need support, where they need to fly a little, more pushing to fly?
Yeah, I think that is ultimately our hope, is that we provide opportunities within the day that teachers can get together and do that collaboration work.
Because it seems like you need a lot of feedback to make this work.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we've got is feedback from our department heads, is that the time is, the time that they get during the morning and then afternoon, they really love that, but unfortunately, all of our teachers aren't able to attend note screenings, because they're voluntary. But if we can embed that during the daytime, where they can be, you know, moving their curriculum forward, get that collaboration going, I think would be a tremendous opportunity for our kids and our teachers.
And again, we do have large chunks of time for teacher collaboration already in our schedule, so part of it is looking at how we use that time differently than in the past. So we talked about PLCs, professional learning communities, and it's about spreading out student work, and spreading out your curriculum, and figuring out what a kid needs to know, understand, be able to do, how we know if they're learning, how we know if they're not, and what's our response going to be. So it's shifting a little bit of the conversations that currently happen during teacher practice. Sometimes it's more around minutia in the technical part of teaching, that we can handle differently.
Versus talking about specific kids and what their needs are.
And teaching and instructional practice.
So maybe I'm not as up to speed on this, but I guess one of the questions I'm hearing constantly is, how will this be different than what it was before honors was actually put in place? That's kind of the main question I get asked, because we had heterogeneous class then. That would be the view that people would have. But the question they would have is that what drove the honors program is there seemed to be, at the higher levels, there seemed to be a losing of the kids and attention and all that kind of stuff. So I guess the question would be, as we move into this, how will we make sure that those issues that happened before don't all of a sudden reemerge?
My sense is that with the shift in being more data-driven in our approach, and really measuring consistently prior to monitoring, what are kids learning? How do we know what's our next move? I think that would be the shift. I think in the past, when I was a teacher, and I know in different districts I've worked in, the focus on the curriculum, and working through the curriculum, but we don't have that prior to monitoring piece as much. And it used to be, you taught in a silo. You went in your classroom, you shut the door, you saw your colleagues at lunch, but you didn't really talk your craft together. So we're making a shift to really, truly being collaborative around student learning, and looking at the process together, and seeing what can we create. So we have a population of students who need something more, I have a population of students who needs an intervention, I have a population of students who just needs a nudge. We're trying to create agency for kids. What does that look like? So it's really about seeing this as, we call it a collaboratory, like we're experimenting on these things and seeing how things work, so that all of us increase our practice, and all kids benefit more pervasively across the board.
Thank you very much. It's a huge answer, taking, I think it's going to really benefit students, I mean, students. Thank you. On to subcommittee updates.
Right. So in your packet, you elaborately reviewed the policy JLCD. It's our first read tonight. This is a policy about administrative medications to students. The currently existing policy had several gaps that were identified by Leslie McGinnis, that either don't conform with our state regulations, or simply don't conform to best practice, notably around self-administration of medication, delegated powers of the school nurse for a trained administration, and so forth. So the policy is much more comprehensive now in this form, and you can see the artifact dealing with self-administration now. What else? So if there are questions, Leslie McGinnis is here, and the policies subcommittee will also be happy to answer any theories you may have.
So now being a health policy expert, what were the changes that were made to the policy from the previous policy?
Hopefully, about 700 words out of it.
Yeah, the other one was kind of wifid.
What are you seeing?
I think, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Leslie, I think one of the biggest pieces was the whole issue of delegation, particularly, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, at the high school level only, for situations where you've got a student who is going on a field trip. And this addition gives the authority to the high school nurse to ensure that somebody who's appropriately trained could be delegated to administer a medication to a high school student. Realized, in the situation of elementary school and the middle school, more often than not, almost always, the school nurse goes on field trips. So it addresses that. Plus, we didn't, you can see the reference policy there, JLCDR speaks to specific situations and guidelines for self-administration of medication of students. And again, a lot of that is straight language that is either straight out of or very tightly aligned with the state regs on that. Realized, we had absolutely nothing in place with best hope today.
So what is the process for?
Oh, new school code. Technically, it is a first reading, okay, to process it, and then next week would be, next meeting, rather, two weeks from tonight, would be second reading, and then a formal vote, a motion and vote for approval. Realized, too, again, to go on to this, you don't have to actually physically read it, you know, under first reading.
I tried.
No, I mean, like, you should read it. You don't have to, like, verbally read it to them. Sorry.
Definitely to make sure our readers are reading the policy. Thank you for that update. Seeing that there, if you don't know old business, we'll move on to new business.
Okay. What I'm going to present tonight is the most current round of the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey. So I think I might have said this in the background notes, I apologize. I mean, I, you know, I'm doing the dumbest possible thing that you could ever do with PowerPoint or Google Slides. I have 47 slides here, okay? It's just ridiculous. But as I said, there's such a wealth of information here, that we literally get back from the Metro West Health Foundation, 300 different charts and graphs and so on. So I had to make some decisions about the things that I thought were the most salient. So you're going to see them. Some I will go through very quickly, but I want to talk about some of the larger trends here, and I do believe there's a lot of really positive news here. So you know, the mission of the Metro West Health Foundation is to support communities in determining adolescent health priorities, and therefore to shape policy and practice of what's happening in our region. So realize, the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey kind of focuses in those seven areas: substance, youth, violence and bullying, unintentional injury, which I'll talk a little bit more about, sexual behaviors at the high school only, mental health, physical activity, nutrition, and weight. And then really, the two sides of the coin that you're talking about, the heart of the matter, what are the risk factors or risk behaviors, and what are the positive things? What are the protective factors that are in our kids' life? It's pretty extensive. It takes about an hour. It's about 160 questions for our high school kids, and 107 for our middle schoolers.
Joe, I don't think you can interrupt, but I'm just going to go.
Yeah, I don't blame you a single bit. So you're probably wondering, well, Chi, the last time I checked, it's 2018. Why are you showing me the 2016 results? They are the most current. It was administered right before Thanksgiving in 2016, so last school year. It takes about seven to eight It takes about seven to eight months for them to get the data back to us because it's benchmarked against the entire state and nationally, and therefore there's tiered times. So, you know, we've had it for some time, but I think, you know, it takes a while to put it together and to process all this. So you see the data there, as far as, you know, our response rate was around 88, 89% at NIPMOC and a little higher, around 94% at Misco. We generally don't have a lot of families that opt their children out of this. In this most current administration, there was only a grand total of 20 students that their parents opted them out. However, they are pretty scrupulous in the process of tallying the data. We had a total between the two schools, about 30 results that were discarded for the simple reason that they could tell from the pattern in answering questions, maybe somebody was just filling in using the number two pencil and making pictures. So they look at patterns for that. So I say that with the premise that we feel pretty good about this data, that it's very valid and reliable data. Just so you know, you see the numbers there, 56 middle schools and high schools across 26 districts in the Metro West region, and you see, you're talking over 40,000 students took this.
So the response rate is after those have been taken out?
Correct, correct. And, you know, some of the mini-grants that we've received in the past, you know, particularly mini-grants around things like the Wellness Weeks that we've done, are tied to us participating in this. Metro West has been administering this since 2006. My predecessor chose to not get involved in it, so that's why we only have three years, three cycles worth of data, which I'm about to show today. So like I said, you know, it gives you a wealth of information and a lot of it kind of talks about what our students' attitudes are and specifically what their behaviors are. And I'll show you a bunch of different slides, and I think I gave you a link to the entire slide package. The data is disaggregated by grades, by male, female, by school versus the region, versus the state, versus nation. And in our case, we have three administration trends, 2012, 2014, 2016. I'd really like to take a look at that to see how are we progressing, how are our kids progressing and so on. So a lot of the slides that I'm going to go through, you'll see that trend of 2012 to 2016, okay? So if I had to do the Reader's Digest version on one slide of everything that is said here, you're going to see a lot of positive things with regard to movement both at the high school and the middle school with things like substance abuse, okay? It's small, it's incremental, but it's definitely a positive trend. You're also going to see that with regard to bullying and cyberbullying. There's a couple spikes here and there, but the overall trend is positive. I think we're seeing in our district the same situation that's being seen nationally. Cigarette smoking is at an all-time low amongst youth, but the thing that's starting to spike up now is vaping or e-cigarettes. Things that, when I gave this presentation two years ago are still there, student stress. It's never been higher. It's through the roof. I think you'll see some mixed data with regard to the really important protective factor of kids really feeling a strong sense of belonging to their school and making solid positive connections with adults. And something that I know we've talked a lot about as a committee is the issue of student sleep and connectivity as far as, and in this iteration of the survey, they asked real interesting questions around how connected kids are and how much social media usage they're using, how much are they online for the purposes of school versus the purposes of social media or gaming or something to that effect? And also some specific questions about parental supervision around online. So I'll show you a couple of both slides, all right? So only like 40 more to go, okay?
Run our way.
So really quickly, substance abuse data. In a perfect world, what we're going to see here is what you see on the left, a nice downward staircase, okay? So this is, what I'm going to generally show you is first NIPMOC data and then Misco Hill data. And you can see the cigarette use, the three bars going left to right are 2012, 2014, then 2016. You see cigarette usage, this is current usage, which we would speak to, you've used these substances within the last 30 days, okay? So cigarettes are down, alcohol is down at least from 2012, and then marijuana is down from both 2012 and 2014. Again, small, incremental. I'm not doing cartwheels, over 25% of our kids using marijuana within the last 30 days, but it is a positive trend. When you compare that to our Misco Hill kids, and again, a lot of the substance questions, even though the survey is for grades six through eight, the substance use questions are only asked to seventh and eighth graders, okay? And you can see very small percentages for all three within the last 30 days. And then this is lifetime use, basically, have you ever used these any time in your life? This would be our high school kids. You see the trends downward. And then lifetime use in other substances. So you see the other substances, inhalants, ecstasy, cocaine, prescription drugs, heroin, and then, what's the last one? Amphetamines. A concern, again, even though it's trending positively, and I would invite you to explore some of the deeper data, is the whole issue around prescription drugs. How it's still there, why is it there? Because they're accessible, they're accessible in the home.
And just to be clear, that's prescription drugs.
That you're using that you weren't prescribed.
That's right.
And the question is very, very explicit about saying, no, this is not, was not prescribed for you. And then the same questions, this would be lifetime use for our Misco Hill students. So you see the downward trends, 1%, is that 1%? Yeah, 1% for marijuana. But again, you see the alcohol in the ballpark of about 10%.
Where does vaping fit into this data?
It's separated out. I'm going to show you a couple slides on it. Okay. Kind of an interesting piece here, but probably predictable is when you look at breaking down substance use, the blue representing the male, male students, and gray, female students. Marijuana usage is double amongst males versus females at the high school. And then trends in alcohol use, high school, again, if you look at lifetime, have you ever had a drink entire in your life? And if you look at one of those little asterisks at the bottom, it says, does not include drinking a few sips of wine for religious purposes. Again, they're very explicit about the type of use. You see a downward trend as far as that. That last one, attended a party where alcohol was available, again, a slight downward trend, but that is the number one source of, you know, another slide gets into where kids are getting alcohol from. And then trends in cigarettes and e-cigarettes, again, on the far left, you see lifetime smoking in a span of four years has gone from 29% to 12%. But if you look on the far right, e-cigarette use in the past 30 days, it's gone from 22 upwards to 26%. So that indicates roughly a quarter of kids are vaping. And then this, I'd like to see this trend in four or six or eight years for our high school. These are our middle schoolers. I, to be very, very candid and frank, I was surprised at, on the far right, current e-cigarette use in the past 30 days. Girls, 0%, boys, 1%. I'd love to keep that maintained. So again, I could probably take that number of slides and multiply that times five easily, but that gives you a snapshot. Violence and bullying data, so there is a lot in here related to, have you ever been in a fight, a physical fight, fights at school, self-injury behaviors, cutting and so on? I'm not going to get into those pieces unless you really at some point want to do a deeper dive. I think some of the big, most important pieces, if you think about where we've been in the last five to 10 years, is the work that's been done around bullying and anti-bullying programs and programs to promote pro-social behaviors. So if you look at this, this is the high school, and if you look on the far left, have you ever been a bullying victim within the last 12 months? And you see the downward trend from 38% to 24%. And then bullying on school property, downward trend, cyberbullying, downward trend. Are you a bullying perpetrator? That's kind of an interesting question for kids to ask. 22% down to 8% and then so on. So across the board at NIPMOC, a downward trend. Then at Misco Hill, similar positive trends as far as bullying victim, bullying victim on school property. I think you have a little bit of a mixed bag there with regard to cyberbullying, but a downward trend between the two administrations of the survey from 14 to 16. Then I thought, this is kind of interesting and this could merit a deeper dive. School bullying bystander behavior, so what are kids doing when they actually seeing bullying occurring? So that first one, saw or heard about another student being bullied at school, that went down by 10%. So at face value, that's a positive trend because if there's less bullying, you're going to see a lot less bullying. Same with the next one, try to stop a student from bullying somebody else at school, that's also downward from 30 to 25%. Told an adult at school that someone was being bullied at school, that's only four, actually in the ballpark between the two of them, 7, 8%.
But actually, this is male, female.
Yeah, exactly. I apologize, wrong point that I'm trying to make there. Just disregard everything I just said in the last two minutes. So, okay, I know what I'm trying to drive home here. This is interesting, actually. This is a disaggregation of male and female. And notice here at NIPMOC that you've got girls kind of taking, more noticing, a more proactive approach when it comes to bullying. If you flip it to Misco, what do you notice? It flips by sex.
Oh, yeah, that's interesting.
Very interesting. So I think that's something that would be an interesting, you know, as the father of two, you know, two daughters, one's still a teenager, I would expect particularly during the middle school years, those female numbers to be much higher, but we've got it reversed. So very interesting. Trends, okay, so this was the point that I was trying to make. Again, downward trends as far as what kids are seeing or reporting with regard to the bullying. So this first group of data is from the high school, and then the second group from Misco Hill. Let's see, in that four-year span, 66 to 50%.
The second column says, try to stop a student from bullying someone else at school. Wouldn't you want that to be the opposite trend? Am I reading it wrong?
Well, but realize that second set of data is tied to the first set of data. So if you never saw a bullying happen, then you're not going to try to stop a student. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, the two are linked.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying?
The first two, the first in 2012, the first two are separated by what, 18%? And 2016 data, they're only separated by 14%.
Yeah.
So I guess there's improvement there.
Okay.
That's interesting, and.
Or is the correlations.
Okay. It's a conversation about correlation and causation. Yeah. That's slide number 48, actually. Okay, so unintentional injury data, fascinating, and I think I went very light here. They actually asked questions to our middle school students about things like, do you ride your bike without a helmet? And it turns out, believe it or not, it's like 29% of Misco kids ride their bikes without helmets. That's not good. I mean, we did in the 70s and we turned out fine, right? I think some of the most impactful data, and a little bit of aha for me, really is kind of high school-centric with regard to distracted driving, and if you think about all of the attention. So interesting piece here, drove with two-plus high school passengers, that's 55% of our kids, it was the first time it was ever asked. If you have a teenager and you know with their first provisional license, that's the no, no, they're not supposed to be doing that. Something that I thought was the best piece of data here is on the far right, drove while texting or emailing, so this is self-admission, four years ago, 43% down to 34. Now granted, I'm not happy about one-third of our kids, you know, texting or email, well, they don't email, or being on Snapchat on their phones while they're driving, but still it is positive, it's moving in a positive direction. And I think one of the larger themes, without getting into this, and, you know, I'll put Leslie on the spot maybe a little bit later, I think it kind of speaks to what you pay attention to and what you really focus on, and that same message that you drive home, you really can see tangible results over time. So this one also just strictly high school, around perceptions, but then also behaviors. Our kids think, kind of interesting, if you look on the far left, I think riding in a car with a high school driver who's had one or two drinks of alcohol is dangerous. 58% say, yeah, that's a problem, but if it's three or four drinks, it's 89%. You see a positive trend in the right direction, that next to last one from the right, think riding in a car with a high school driver who has been using marijuana is very dangerous, but again, it's still only around 50%. And then rode with high school driver who had been using marijuana, it's a positive trend, but it's still 18%, okay? I think our kids are a microcosm of our society, obviously. I think, you know, I think where we are, particularly in the country, but here in the Commonwealth with the legalization of marijuana, that's a difficult trend to buck. It really is. And I think it speaks to the work that our wellness teachers, that our school nurses, that our entire staff do in, you know, reinforcing a positive message to our kids. Then there's some selected mental health data, and this kind of gets into what are the perceptions around stress. At our high school, you're looking at. you're looking at roughly 37% of our kids think life is very stressful. And, you know, you look at some of that data around self-injury, 17%. Consideration of suicide and suicide attempt. At somebody in district who was studying to say, do you think that those numbers are really real, Joe? Or do you think to somebody answering the drama and so on? I do think they are real. I think everybody's thoughts and perceptions are different. But to somebody, to students filling out the survey, it is very real. And I think this is the same exact data for our middle school kids, okay? The general trend with our middle school kids is things, our life is easier. So we don't see the bars to the degree that we do. But we still have 20% of our middle schoolers. And you see, that's actually a negative trend about life being very stressful, going from 10 to 20% in a four-year span.
And 11% seriously considering suicide. That's alarming.
I agree. Sources of stress. Okay, and this one, okay, we're back to blue. So it's disaggregated by girls and boys. You see school issues for both is the top. But you've got this big, big delta of almost 30% identifying school as a stress for girls versus for boys. Doesn't surprise me, the way schools are structured and created and girls being able to quote-unquote, play the game of school better than boys are. And you see the other factors there as well.
It's interesting that you say that, Joe, that girls are better able to play the game at school, but 81% of our girls are really stressed out.
Yes, yes.
That's not a pretty...
81%?
81%.
81% of people...
No, of the female students. That one's disaggregated by male, female.
Okay. So 81 and 52, would the number of life very stressful and the other stress be much higher? I'm just trying to understand what...
No, that response issue is, they responded that they were worried or stressed about those specific items often or very often. So responding to a couple of different survey items, 81% of our girls at NIPMUC said that they're worried or stressed often or very often about school. Okay? Here's our Misco kids. Similar patterns, but you can see with a lesser degree of intensity. But you still have that delta between girls and boys. And then, what are we worried about in school? And the number one thing at the high school is getting good grades. And then after that, being able to finish schoolwork and study enough. And then college or other plans after high school. Pressure from parents or guardians to do well in school. And then I think the next would be being involved in extracurricular activities. Okay? Again, girls. And then I think they asked the middle school students things in a simpler, more generic way. But you can see, school issues is also number one in their stressors. And then I wanted to say, you know, when you see some of that data, you're kind of alarmed. So one of the looks that I'm giving you here that the survey gives is, how do our kids compare versus the region of all, you know, all the kids that took this survey regionally? What did we say? It was about 30,000 kids. It's pretty close. We're a little more stressed than our neighbors. I mean, you know, I wouldn't want to see Lincoln Sudbury's data. But it's very close. So here's the good things, the protective factors of all of these issues, things that are research-based, that addresses risk behaviors. So our trends in school attachment at NIPMUC. So this, we want to see the opposite. We want to see an upward-reaching staircase. So I feel like I'm close to people at school, 78% of kids. I feel like I'm part of the school, 73%. I feel safe at my school. I feel happy to be at school. So you're seeing, you know, generally speaking, an upward trend. But do I still think that there's work to be done? Yeah, I think the work should always be 100% across the board in all of these issues. So again, this is another look at how we do regionally at the high school, how we do at the high school versus regionally. And you could see in four or five of those items were slightly higher at NIPMUC. So again, the same look at Misco Hill. And I think you have a mixed bag here. You've got a couple of places where you actually see a downward trend as far as feel close to people at school, feel like I'm part of the school. And I think that really kind of stresses the whole imperative of inclusiveness and connectivity within the school community. Every kid really feeling like they have a niche. And again, how does Misco compare regionally? And you can see a slightly downward trend, or not actually downward trend, but slightly lower than it is regionally. Trends in adult support. So this is always kind of interesting of how kids answer this question. Do you have an adult at school to talk to? So again, at NIPMUC, you see a positive trend of 74% say, yes, I do have somebody. You see, they may say, I have an adult to talk to. But you see very few actually share a personal problem. And then, you know, and that would, in my humble opinion, correlate with that last bar. Well, I have a parent or a non-school adult to talk to. Very, very high, our kids are in the 90%. So it kind of speaks to their home connection. Same thing here at Misco Hill. I think it very much mirrors what we have in NIPMUC. Do you have an adult at school to talk to about a personal problem? Almost similar to NIPMUC, 72%. Very few are doing it. But again, do you have somebody outside of school to talk to about important things? Again, upwards in the 90s as far as percent. So this is some of the other risk factors and others. And I think we're coming up upon slide 42, 43. But as I was putting this together, the first person I thought of was you, Diane, because I know you're on this like white on rice. They separated things out in looking at how well are our kids sleeping and how much are they online on some type of device? So our kids aren't terribly good sleepers at NIPMUC, okay? We've got 21% of girls getting eight hours of sleep and 29% of boys. But if you look at how much time they're spending online, 62% of girls are online for three hours or more, 55%. But I think it's kind of interesting, if you look into that far right, spends three-plus hours on screen time that is not for school or homework. It's 41% of girls and 42% of guys.
How does that correlate with the second bar, spends three-plus hours of online?
That's just in general.
Just in general.
In general, okay. Well, no, actually, yeah. No, that, the qualifier says on an average school day. And I think the rest would be in the context of an evening.
Okay. So three hours during the day online and then three hours in the evening on screen time.
Either homework, studying, extracurricular activities. Well, actually, the next to last one doesn't speak to anything online. It's just, are you doing extracurricular activities or sports? So kind of interesting, if you compare the high school data to our Misco data, by and large, 2/3 of our kids at Misco are getting eight hours or more of sleep. And then if you go to the far right, spends three-plus hours on screen time that is not for school or homework, it's roughly a third.
What is it, can you go back to the last one at NIPMUC? 40, so 30 to 40%. 30 at Misco, 40 at NIPMUC.
So here's another interesting piece. And this was the first time that they asked us. Household rules monitoring and communication regarding online behavior. So kids were asked, do you have any rules in your household about social media? 69% of girls, 73% said, no rules. Parent or guardian never or rarely monitor social media use. 72% of girls, 82% of guys. Parent, guardian never or rarely discusses how to appropriately and responsibly act online. 68% of girls, 88% of boys at the high school age, okay? I think a lot of us have had the opportunity to hear a lot of different speakers, you know, people like Bill Daggett and Will Richardson. And he always talks about rethinking the curriculum and how appropriate online usage, you know, just digital citizenship is a 21st century literacy. You know, I'm not happy about these numbers, but I think it really, it screams the imperative nature of how this has to be a core literacy in the schools. Because quite frankly, it's not happening in the home. If you look at the same data for our Misco students, it's smaller. But if you look at that last one, parent, guardian never rarely discuss how to act appropriately and responsibly online. You're pushing upwards of 50 to 60%. So very, very interesting piece of data. So the net-net of all of this is, how do we respond? How do we take this overwhelming amount of information and really work with it effectively? I think a lot of it is what we have started to do. I think we now are, at least in year three, of implementing our wellness weeks, both at NIPMUC and at Misco. I've talked in the past, I know when in giving updates on the district action plans about the family continuity project, program out of Whiteman'sville, how that really provides wraparound services where kids are getting counseling services within the school and the home simultaneously. We've done some terrific work with regard to implementing social thinking groups at NIPMUC for students that need that type of service. And we've got now full implementation both at Misco and the high school of the S-Bert protocol, the screening protocol. To screen, is a student experimenting or outright using substances? Other things, I know, I will put you on the spot, but maybe Leslie, talk a little bit about some of the work that you've already done in advisories and plan programming around vaping?
Not in advisory.
I thought it was in advisory.
No, well, we had an advisory presentation on mixing prescription drugs and alcohol for all of the students at the high school. We did a presentation for the staff on vaping during coffee hours on April 13. And then I'm going to be working with some students. I emailed all the student population with the subject line of a free pizza party and that got them to respond. That's coming from the former surgeon general, US Surgeon General in the84.org, which is the Massachusetts group fighting tobacco use. And so we're going to be working on ways to get the myths and facts about vaping out to the school population prior to the end of May. That's when culminates with the pizza party at that point. So the students are interested in that. They already have some of their own ideas of things they want to do. The myths and facts were sent to us by the84.org and the former surgeon general. So we have the information, just different ways to share it. We have information on the health office website for parents and students about vaping. And we send it out to the teachers as well because we definitely have some concerns at the high school about students vaping in the bathroom. The addictive component of the nicotine in the vaping is so high for students. One vaping e-cigarette, one Juul, one component of it is like a pack of cigarettes in terms of nicotine. And the brain, the adolescent teenage brain is primed for addiction. And they're leaving class because they're addicted to the nicotine. That's what the problem is. And they don't think they're smoking nicotine. The majority does have nicotine in it. There is no oversight on the packaging and the material, no FDA regulations for vaping materials, so they can just start whatever they want on the packaging.
I think sometimes too, it's troubling that there is a perception among some parents, and I think the public in general, that somehow it's cleaner or it's less hazardous than smoking a traditional cigarette.
I think that was the intent originally when it came out, was to help adults who are addicted to hooked-on cigarettes, combustible cigarettes, to quit smoking. But the data doesn't really prove that out, that it's, you know, it's really very addictive. And big tobacco is really using the same tools that they used to hook people on cigarettes in the 50s and 60s to hook kids on vaping. And you can see that in the data in the Metro West survey, the number of kids that try it. They think it's harmless until they're hooked on it.
Great point. Kind of also moving forward, I think the work that we've done at Misco with regard to mentoring program and the ongoing work with Rachel's Challenge consistently sends, you know, a message around pro-social behaviors. I think we've also talked about the bigger picture district-wide and promoting greater student voice and student agency also kind of leads to protective factors. And then, you know, what Jen was just talking about before, about, and Paul as well, rethinking the schedule. You know, we've had this real disparity where our wellness classes have been inlective so that we've had situation where students have gone through four years of Misco without ever taking a single wellness class. We can't permit that to happen anymore. You've got a whole cohort of kids that are missing some key content. So that's our thinking with regard to that. You know, again, I see a lot of positive news here. And I think a lot of it is due to the messaging and programming that we've put in place and hit consistently. So anyway, that's slide 47. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
A lot of information.
It is overwhelming, it really is.
I'm certain that there are takeaways and things that we can really focus in on, hone in on, to try to make some changes for our students.
It seems like it's all sort of groundbreaking territory, you know, use of vaping equipment. You know, the whole idea of the stress and the cellphone use and being online. All those ideas, are there any standards that have been developed for those areas? Is there anything that's published so we don't, so we can go by some sort of guideline? Have any studies been done in that area? So I haven't seen anything on cellphone use. Just it's basically, hey, we know it's, I know there's a problem here, but we don't really know what the standard should be to solve the problem.
No, have I ever seen, you know, a comprehensive study around, you know, health risks or effects of online, you know, having your cellphone and so on? No. I mean, the overwhelming majority, if not all of it, is completely speculative in nature. You know, will somebody be doing a study someday? I'm sure it's happening as we speak.
I said that, I bet you it's happening next week.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's just, it's hard to, it's hard to draw conclusions or give advice when there's no, you know, definitive guidance or scientific... when there's no definitive guidance or scientific guidance on this. You're just sort of going by gut. You know, we know that if you total up all the hours that a child is involved with, you're going, okay, there's two hours of sleep a night?
Well, and my big concern, you know, we can go back and forth and talk about the online, being online and the online activities of social media versus schoolwork and so on. But I think when push comes to shove, a couple of my big takeaways is the amount of sleep that our kids are getting. And fortunately, I think we could say the same for adults as well. But then also the whole monitoring piece. The monitoring of online activities and so on. I think that's a little problematic.
Yeah, I look at the amount of time on technology combined with the stress. And then we're constantly talking about arriving to school ready to learn. And you look, okay, so they've had five hours of sleep, they're stressed, and they're addicted to their technology. How ready to learn is that kid? It's very concerning.
So what's going to happen next with the data that's going to arrive?
Great question. I think it will continue to drive what our priorities are in the big picture and looking at our strategic plan. But also in the smaller picture of some of the specific activities like the Wellness Weeks and so on that we do at our two schools. I think also in the bigger picture, in talking about measuring our success as a district, we talk about using multiple measures, not just MCAS or something that is a standardized test. This really speaks to social emotional health, a lot of these data points. So I think being able to monitor this, track this, but also publicly report it and so on will be the work moving forward.
I think there'd be a lot of parents, I mean, I don't know that everybody watches school committee meetings at home, but like, I think there'd be a lot of very surprised parents to seize on these statistics. I know, I'm a little.
And realize, I scratched the surface. I scratched the surface.
You have a lot more information that you could have shared.
Absolutely. I shared probably about 10, 10 to 15% of what I could have shared.
But I think it's important, you know, not to overwhelm the community, but share with the community so they know what, you know, when we're talking about our priorities and our strategic planning, that we're drawing from some of this data to create, you know, situations that our students can thrive in and not make matters worse for them.
Well, just a, just a simple, just if I'm standing back and not trying to make a judgment about each activity, there's a time management problem at its core. This is pure time management. So if the kids don't understand that they've got that schedule, they will go overboard on a given activity, whether it's homework or extracurriculars or online use, and they'll, they'll just suck it up when it comes to sleep.
And I think, you know, in looking at this and not becoming overwhelmed and taking a deep breath and stepping back, I think you have to ask yourself as an organization, what are the things that are within the realm of our control?
Absolutely.
And I think the things that are in the realm of our control is our messaging, is our visioning of establishing what is our priority and what is seen and what is not seen as far as expectations and so on. So it does play a role in informing our plans moving forward, most definitely.
And it should. Did our Wellness Weeks come out of what? Were our Wellness Weeks developed in response to some of this data?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. It started, because the first time we administered it was in 2012. So we got that data back in 2013 and we started up with the Wellness Weeks, I believe, in the 14, 15th year.
Any correspondence?
We have none.
Other matters not anticipated by the committee within 48 hours of the posted meeting? Future agenda items are the present, will be the presentation of the FY 2017 New USDA report, number 14. And then we will do a roll call to executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Exemption 1, to conduct a hearing on the High Level 5 Grievance brought forward by murder. The committee will not return to open session.